All right.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so I see that we have a. So the time is seven o three. So. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I see that we do have a quorum. And. Don't we? Do we have a quorum? Yes. Yeah, of course. So. Before we begin the meeting, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
I think I'm going.
Okay.
This thing here, because I'm having some unstable. Having some unstable internet, so I'm gonna try to log in with my phone and see if that works better.
Okay. Let's let's hold for a minute then.
Well. Okay, I'll I'll try now. So thank you, everybody. As you may have heard, the meeting tonight will be recorded. Ask that folks that have any questions or wish to make a comment, please raise your hands or. Feel free to also send me a message in the chat. I see that there's a couple of residents that have already done so, so I will acknowledge you in just a moment. If for some reason tonight we get interrupted in a way that doesn't allow us to continue on with the meeting, we will. Shut off the recording, disseminate a new link to join and try to take back up our business so that we can carry on and. Finish out the agenda. Ask the folks that are speaking, please just make sure to state your name for the record. And. If you are not actively engaged in the conversation, if you could please. Be better targeted for the people that are active in the conversation. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
So I think there are a few people that need to block their video.
Okay, let's see.
Okay, so good. Now we have. So we've gotten a little rusty on our Zoom since we got. Went back to reality. So thank you, everybody, for. For. Okay, hold on a second. So our first item of business is a public comment period. And I see that Rowhe cannot has. Raise his hand first.
Thank you very much. So good evening, everyone. I've just. A couple of things that I wanted to raise this evening. One relates to the question of sidewalks. And I sent a message to the council, mayor and to the town manager. Sort of making two very specific requests. On sidewalks. The first is. Whether the town could. Send a polite reminder to. Individual homeowners. Where their vegetation is encroaching on the sidewalks. I think. You know. Matt has been sending. General messages, but I think. Sort of a targeted one to individual homeowners who are whose vegetation is encroaching would be, I think, helpful. I think most. Residents would respond quite positively to a gentle nudge. So does I'm not I'm not asking for a citation or a warning, but just a gentle nudge. And I'm assuming that. You already know quite a few of these properties. Because I think the the town council had a working session discussion on it. Related to this point, also wanted to ask. For the town itself. To trim its own trees. And there are very, very large number of town trees. Whose branches are obstructing sidewalks. I've actually identified almost all of them for. For the town manager. I'm not asking for entire limbs to be cut off, but frankly, just, you know, even if it's six to 12 inches. And sometimes even less of these branches, I think, would be very helpful and clear up. And I think before the town asks individual homeowners to. Clean up their vegetation, the town should to do this as well. And frankly, I think, you know. Both of these should be fairly straightforward. Asks. The second point I wanted to raise. Relates to the police officer. Contracted by the town. I know there's a lot of discussion about terms of reference and mandate and reporting and logging and. Guidelines and policies and so on. I'm not getting involved in that discussion. I'm asking for a very common sense. Step, and that is. Request the the police officer. Whenever whenever he is on duty in the town. To station himself. On Dorset. At the at the intersections of Warwick or and or Surrey. And we all know that Dorset is the busiest street in the town. And I think it's just common sense to ask him to to station himself there. I really don't see the point. Of taxpayer money being spent on the police officer being at the intersection of. Essex and Surrey, Fallstone. And Surrey, Greystone. I mean, these are all. Really, I just I just don't understand why he would be there. And so even while we are discussing the, you know, the bigger issues regarding the police. With the Public Safety Committee, I think this is this is just a common sense request. Is just park yourself where there's the most traffic. I think just the visible presence of the police car there. Would be enough to avoid the most egregious. Violators. Again, I don't care if they. You know how much they're stopping stop sign violations, but there are people who are just not even yielding to pedestrians. There are people who don't even slow down at stop signs. I think just the visible presence of the police officer will address that. So and then related to and secondarily, I think that when schools, when school is in session. Three weeks from today. I would I would suggest that the police officer. During school hours, if he is on duty at that time, should station himself on Warwick near the school. As I think as a matter of as a matter of gain, common sense, public safety. He doesn't need to get involved in helping the crossing guard and all of that stuff. I think just if he's going to be parked in his cruiser somewhere. During school hours, park yourself near the school. Rather than park yourself on Greystone. Which is, I think, rather pointless. So with that, I'll I want to thank you very.
Okay, thank you, Rowe, for joining us tonight. I had meant to respond to your. Beautiful, comprehensive email that you wrote about 10 days ago. And I am gonna let the town manager briefly respond to a couple of the topics. It's very timely that you asked the questions because I believe that committees and the staff are working on. Everything that you talked about. But I do want to say that there was more good stuff in your letter that some of which. Can be addressed at the committee level, too. So. Rather than take a lot of time. To respond, because I'm let me let me just have Matt briefly respond to your two biggest questions. And then we will get back to you with answers. To some of the other things you asked about in your letter. Thank you, Matt. Why don't you? And Matt has muted himself.
Because of. Yeah, apologies. The I turned off my video just to get my connection a little bit more stable. So apologies for. Not having my video on. But yeah, thank you, Mr. Connor, for your comments and your email. With regards to the vegetation, short answer is yes. We kind of worked out a general plan based on the. Parks and Natural Resources Committee's recommendations. And so. The first step in that was to send out, as you said, just more generic townwide. Reminders to folks. Thank you for sending. A list of some addresses that we should put put some eyes on. I also went around town and put together my own list. So. Yeah, the next the next step is, in addition to the town, I've talked to the town arborist about. Cutting back some of our own vegetation would be to reach out to individual homeowners. And then. In terms of the police. Again, I thank you for your suggestions. I think one of the things that we talked about at previous meetings was perhaps to get. Some updates from our police officers at periodic meetings so that they can. Sort of give give some updates on. What they've observed over the past few months and any any other pertinent information that might be shared with the town and. And the council, I think that that might be a helpful step in. Improving overall the coverage in town and. What what our expectations are and what the service we get from that. So in general, thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. And as the mayor said, we can get back to you on more comprehensive response if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. And Rowe, I'm gonna try to give you a call. Because you had a lot of other good points in your letter that. Can be addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Any other resident or guest wish to make a public comment?
Yes, Julie Greenberg, I think, is with us, and she said that she'd like to make.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hi, this is Julie Greenberg at forty seven seventeen Fallstone. But I'm here actually. Speaking on behalf of Norm Coleman, who was unable to make it on short notice. Today. I'm just putting a placeholder in discussion on behalf of Mr. Coleman. That. He would like to present to the. Town his. Distress. About the confluence of. Just a. Combination of. Natural circumstances as well as manmade. Circumstances that have led to the second episode of catastrophic flooding. In his. Garage and. And. And driveway area, you know, multiple feet of water. He's lost his third car, I believe. He had lost two before. It's just an incredible quantity, and this one was occasioned primarily by the storm sewer breakage on Dorset. So given the work that the. Town Council is hoping to do with Bayland. On some of the green infrastructure that's possible in that area. But also. This rate, the the issue has now been raised of other grading and sewer. Problems. He just wanted to ask that I let you know that. This he will be presenting you with. More information and asking for technical support from the town. Too, because he it's just an amazingly complex problem. So thank you, and I just wanted to do that on his behalf.
Yes, that. Thank you, Julie. As you know. Those are my next neighbors and. As you know, I've lived through their three different tragedies. In the last 20 years. And and I've been talking to them a lot and also. She told me she was gonna come tonight. I guess she had an issue. But in any case. One other thing that we need to do is also have some talks with WSSC about, you know. The generic general problem about water main breaks. And what they what kind of potential special attention they could give to the town. So so thank you for. Joining us tonight, and I will get back to Norman Carolyn tomorrow again and and. See what we can do to help them. But thank you. Was there anybody else, Mr. Town Manager?
No other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I see Councilmember Barr and seconded by Council President. Is there discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. We will now move to our first public hearing. Which is. To consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Peter Lustig. On behalf of Lustig Associates for the construction of a new home on the property located at fifty five twenty eight. Trent Street. So we will begin. Today is August seventh, twenty twenty three. This is a continuation of the hearing before the town of Somerset Council. To consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Peter Lustig on behalf of Lustig Associates LLC. For the construction of a new home on the property located at fifty five twenty eight Trent Street. As a reminder to all participants and observers, this hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council from the podium and by speaking into the microphone. And state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings. And submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Following that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. Relevant to the application at hand. After that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. You may make a motion on a permit decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor stated, just for a reminder for the council, the applicant and anybody else. That this is a continuation of the hearing which began at the. July. Tenth council meeting. And at that mediation and. Paraphrasing, but in general came away with kind of four main points that they. They asked the applicant to address further. Number one was stormwater management. Generally, and also specifically. The extent to which the proposed stormwater management. Adhered to the town's. Tiered preference list in the code, which prioritizes. Environmental site design standards as they're defined in the town code. The second was the driveway. The proposed driveway is. Seven inch incline and. The town code requires all driveways to be constructed with permeable pavers, except those above a five percent grade. And so the council had asked. The applicant to consider a redesign of the driveway. Or further explanation why it was not possible to. Bring it within a grade to be able to use those permeable pavers. Another concern that was brought up during the hearing was that the age of the house. What type of testing might be done and how. Did any demolition would handle hazardous materials. Asbestos in particular was. Was mentioned at the last hearing. And then there was a few questions related to some discrepancies between the intake of the stormwater devices. And the required amount per the for the code. I laid out. Kind of cover. Memo for the council. That the applicant had addressed. All four of these. Questions via email. Number one was. A. A breakdown. Containing an explanation that supports the the design types that were selected and the reasons that the applicant did not select the preceding. Designed types. Similarly, related to to the dry driveway. The applicant stated that due to the length of the driveway and because it's flanked by drywells that are part of the. Proposed stormwater management infiltration. Strategy. In order to capture enough water for a one year storm event, it wasn't practical to redesign the house and driveway with the slope under that five percent. The applicant also did acknowledge the concerns about asbestos and. Stated that. They would they would test, take sample tests for asbestos and handle them in accordance with federal, state and county regulate. actions if if they were if it was found. And then on number four, they clarified that although the individual drywells, I think two of the four individual drywells. Are designed to store one cubic foot less than one year storm, that the total volume of water stored via the devices. Is beyond the one year requirement. And so it satisfies the code requirements. So given given those explanations. The staff's opinion was that the stormwater designs do fit the criteria of the code. And. Recommend approval of the application. I do know we have our stormwater consultant here, Chris Chris Step from Bayland, as well as our building administrator Doug Lomire. And our town arborist, Dr. Feather, as well, if there are any follow up questions for any of our technical experts.
But but none of them, but none of them. None of them have anything to add to the. Staff report at this time.
Well, I don't. I guess I'll give it a quick opportunity. I don't know, Chris, if if you want to expound on anything I said related to stormwater, since those were those were kind of the main concerns.
No, not really. I think, Matt, you did a great job summing everything up and summing up what the the applicant's response is to the council's concerns.
Great, thank you. So yes, I I think that concludes the staff report for this time, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the applicants. Either opening statement or comments on the staff report. And could the applicants please identify themselves again? For the record.
Mr. Lustig, and then I know that he's also joined by Jeff Robertson from CAS Engineering.
This is Peter Lustig. I am I am here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything? To your application or comment on the staff report, or you just want to take questions?
Well, I I with respect to the stormwater management issues. I I defer to my. Civil engineer Jeff Robertson from CAS Engineering. Who who has developed the plan. This is not my area of expertise. And that is why he is representing me. So I would. Any questions? That need to be directed. About the stormwater management, I would. I would ask Jeff to to respond. With respect to the asbestos. I will have. Samples done on. The roofing material as well as. Various materials on the inside of the house that may. Contain asbestos and. Have them tested in the lab and take any. Mediation efforts, remediation efforts that are required. As reported by the lab. Before. Any any demolition commences.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robertson, did you want to add anything or you just or you'll just take questions?
Sure, Jeff Robertson with CAS Engineering. Nice to see everyone here virtually and. Keep me off the roads this evening, so I appreciate that. No, I think Matt did a good job. We've been in communication regarding this plan, you know, over the last last couple of months. Hopefully, you'll find that those those comments were adequately addressed and look forward to answering any questions. Anyone may have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes. And I guess to lead off the discussion. I forwarded some photographs I took. On July twenty ninth during that sort of microstorm that we had. That I asked. If Matt, if you can. Present. For for other council members and for our guests. So anyhow, we were hit by that storm. I believe it was Friday night. The twenty nine, no, Saturday night, sorry. Totally tremendous amount of rainfall. It actually wasn't that much rain. It just came down really hard, really fast. It was about. Half an inch, I believe, a little less than half an inch. I tried to look it up on. Weather maps, but it was sufficient to cause a river flowing down Trent Street. And. Like I said, the rain didn't last very long, so by the time I walked up to. Fifty five twenty eight. The rain had stopped. But in the bottom picture, you can see the stormwater just flowing off the property. So I just. The the point in sharing this is. To highlight the issue that the town is facing with stormwater and. The really pressing needs for stormwater management. But thank you very much, Matt. I do have a number of questions. I'm trying to understand, I guess, the responses to. To the council's questions. I'm also trying to understand. Some of the engineering calculations, and I'm not that familiar with all of it. So we talked about the amount of stormwater that is captured and retained. By the drywells. I believe I saw that there was a factor applied that. Effectively reduced the amount of. Water from the roof that had to be held or stored in the drywells. Is that correct? I guess this would be for CAS Engineering.
Sorry, just working through the unmute button. I'm not sure what you mean by a reduction factor applied.
If. If we were to multiply the. Square footage of the roof by the two point six inch annual storm event, one year storm event. We would have a certain number of cubic feet of water to be. Held on site. But when I looked at the. One of the tables. In the documentation provided. It appeared that there was a factor applied that reduced the amount of. Water that had to be held. I'm trying to understand why. Am I incorrect? Is there no factor? You're you're you're. Holding all of it.
Yeah, so sheet two of the approved. Montgomery County plans. Contains a table. And that and that table. Is Montgomery County's. CAS's formula for environmental site design. And the county requires. That one point eight inches of runoff be provided for the project. So. So. While some devices can be sized for the one-year storm, the requirement at the Montgomery County level is to, is to address. One-point-eight inches rather than two-point-six inches. However.
I'm sorry, she said, where do you provide the calculations for two-point-six inches?
Under the maximum volume check one-year storm column. Um in the middle of that chart, last column, second to last column from the right.
Nice and volume check, yes.
So that's the one-year storm calculation for each contributing roof area.
So. Okay, I'll, I'll, I may come back on that question. Thank, thank you for explaining that. The difference in, in some of the wells not covering certain amounts of water. It would seem to me that that means. Some areas of the yard. The water would not be contained. Small amounts of water would not be contained. Is that correct?
Well, the dry wells, the dry wells are sized. Up to the one-year storm event, the county will not allow providing more volume than the one-year storm event. So. Two of the four dry wells. Looking at my calculation, sorry. Two of the four dry wells match exactly to the one-year volume. Um the other two are short. By one cubic feet, one cubic foot each. Um and it's just simply a mechanism of, of sizing. A. Nine by five by nine-point-five foot by nine-point-three foot by five-foot deep. Gravel structure. So. The accuracy of constructing that, that device and, and trying to gain one additional cubic foot. Was not a practical consideration.
Okay, so. I'm just sorry, trying to. I'll, I'll come back. Let me ask a few more questions. Um. Trying to understand the soil testing that was done. Did you do any perk tests?
No.
No. Why not?
The county requires a soil typing investigation. Um those were the tests that were performed here. And those simply evaluate the uh classification, evaluate and classify the soil. To determine whether or not it's likely to function acceptably. Uh uh in terms of infiltration.
I note on. Yes, so Mr. Dylan's email from CAS Engineering on June thirteenth. Uh see attached soil type report indicating acceptable soils at S-two location. That, that raised two questions to my mind. What does it mean to be acceptable? And why is the S-one location not mentioned?
I think his email was maybe in response to. Some other questions. I don't have his email in front of me at this moment.
Oh, that, that's possible. It was provided, I think, out of context, just. Provided as attachment to the package.
But both. Both soil testing locations uh confirmed acceptable soil classifications.
Thank you. Noted that um. I'm looking now at, I guess it's your email from July twentieth. We're looking at different options. Sort of the response to the town's questions. There's indication that. With regards to landscape infiltration, which I would think of as rainscape or rain gardens. Even if the devices are not suitable for small residential yards. Wh- why do you say that?
So landscape infiltration. Devices in this particular application. Are able to treat up to ten thousand square feet of drainage area. Granted, the subject property is, is eight thousand square feet. The design of those facilities would require any. Upstream water uh to be diverted around the facility. In other words. They can't be designed to treat neighboring water that enters the property. So it has, it has to be diverted. And diverting that is quite challenging on an eight-thousand-square-foot lot. As you would have to have drainage swales. Kind of around wherever you place the landscape infiltration facility. Um and those landscape infiltration facilities have other setback um. Limitations similar to those of dry wells. But. The fact that dry wells have been. Uh proposed and approved, there's no available space on the property for. Any such landscaping infiltration devices.
Okay. Let's look at uh. The permeable driveway and. I don't know, this, I guess this is a question for town staff and town engineer. Did we independently assess the existing slope of that yard? And I asked because I went there and took some measurements with a. With a uh. You know, large level and some blocks so I could level it off and measuring tape. And I believe that that front yard has a slope that varies from two degrees to six degrees.
Maybe Doug can answer this in greater detail, but I. I believe that the slope is taken by the uh. It, the total slope of the driveway from the uh. The survey measurements of the, the height at where that, where that proposed. Front of the houses from the uh curb cut.
Okay, great, great point. Um. And I guess be, before we dug answers, I'd like to go to, to Ron. It's my understanding, Ron, that when it comes to. These sorts of. Assessments of the landscaping. We are required to use the landscaping as-is, not after. The home is constructed. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Let me read the code language to be certain. Well, the, the code provides all new or replacement driveways must be constructed with permeable materials. This requirement shall not apply to the following, a driveway having a slope of five percent or more. Though ultimately the driveway that's constructed can't have a slope of five percent or more. But I think you can reasonably interpret that code provision to. Require the applicants to address the grade that exists rather than to. Let's say modify it so the slope is six percent in order to avoid that requirement, not saying that's what's done here. But just by way of example, so I, I think a reasonable interpretation would be that. You're dealing with this, the pre-construction slope. Mr. President, you're muted. You're muted now.
Sorry, thank you. There's some wild cat noises in the background. I had a mute. Uh thank you very much, Ron. Doug, did you have any additional? Uh comments on the slope of the yard?
Yes, uh I checked the elevations and the elevation at the base of the garage is. Uh eighty-nine-point-nine and the elevation at the property line is eighty-seven-point-eight. So there's a two-point-one differential divided by the length of thirty-point-four feet. That equals a six-point-nine percent slope and that's from the proposed site plan.
Yeah, from the proposed site plan. Thank you. That, that explains where the seven percent from. And I had a. Another question for, for Ron. Um. I'm trying to understand. I guess the relevance or requirement for waivers. And I've been thinking about this and I thought of a hypothetical where. A builder selected a home design that. Um when you put it on the lot, it would, I don't know, protrude one foot into a setback somewhere. And it would seem to me that that landscaper, that, that the builder would need to request a waiver to go into the. Setback. They couldn't just say, well, that's the design we picked, so. That's the way it is. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes, yeah. Uh setback variance. Yeah, that requires an application and a showing of peculiar conditions of the lot and hardship, so on.
So, so in a case like this where, for example, the town code. Specifies a tiered approach to address stormwater management. And the top tier would be taking steps such as. A green roof. Then if. The builder wishes to build a house without a flat roof, so they can't build a green roof. They would need a waiver to skip that step in the tiered stormwater management. Is that perhaps correct?
Correct, if the council were to find that. Reasonable opportunities do exist up the tier. So this provision is slightly different than. A setback provision, for example. A setback provision does include consideration of reasonableness. Either you comply with the setback or you don't. With stormwater drainage. We're required to consider, you know, what, what's reasonable going down the tiers.
Right. Okay, uh thank you very much. I do not have any other questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yes, first of all, I hope you understand that we are very concerned about. Stormwater mitigation on um. Both our current homes, but also on new homes being developed. Because of the substantial problems with flooding that we have, as you in fact heard right at the start of the meeting. With that said, I, I appreciated the very thorough response to our, our comments, but um I can't say that I, they entirely satisfied me. And I'm, so I'm going to start with one question, which is. You said that the county. Limits. Construction like dry wells to no more than um storage for a one-year storm event. Um does the county limit landscaping strategies for mitigation in any similar way?
Um landscaping strategies.
Like rain gardens or, you know, whatever bioswales or.
Yeah, I mean, the county limits. Sizing of all. ESD devices, right? So dry wells, landscape infiltration, rain gardens. All those. All those devices are limited to the one-year storm event.
And you're sure about that?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure, yes.
All right. Next point is that you mentioned that rain gardens, as was Steve brought up, were unsuitable for um. Small residential properties. As you might know, there are at least fifteen or twenty rain gardens in Somerset on small residential properties. And they are managing pretty well. Uh. They are not, of course, trying to capture all of the runoff from a roof. Um they are capturing some portion of runoff from a roof and are part of the overall mitigation strategy for those homes. Secondly, you mentioned that rain gardens pond. Yes, they do pond indeed. Um but they also clear that water usually within twenty-four hours. Um which is not problematic for mosquitoes or for anything else. Um so in fact, they are um reasonable devices to consider. Um. Dry wells have problems too, as you know, and I would not consider approving this without. Permit without putting conditions on dry wells, uh particularly that there be a maintenance plan. For inspection of the dry wells because they silt up. And are less effective over time and less cleared. So I'll stop there for just now. Thank you.
So. Each of these devices um. Like anything else with a house, has to be maintained. Um. The county requires. A right-of-entry agreement. For every property that is subject to the stormwater management uh requirements. And part of that agreement. Um enables the county to inspect. Um these devices at any time.
Yes, but I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as you know, the county is not really fully staffed to do inspection of all the dry well devices. That are installed in homes around the county, right?
I would imagine that they would inspect if there's a problem.
Identified by someone.
Correct.
Yeah. I think we need a maintenance plan.
Councilmember Barr, that is now written into the town code. Whenever a stormwater drainage plan is required. The town has a maintenance agreement requirement that we record in land records, just like the county does.
Thank you.
Councilor, do you have any further questions?
No further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Helen. You're muted. You're, you're muted.
Thanks, sorry, instead of figure it out, different device tonight I'm on. Um I, I have a couple of questions. First. This is home. Are you using all of the, the, the allowable amount of the lot that you can build on?
I assume you're referring to. Under the law coverage allowance?
Yes.
No.
Do you have a lot of space left over?
No.
Okay, so you have a little space left over.
A little space.
Okay, little space, thank you. Um where I'm going with this is. In terms of our, our stormwater management and our problems in this neighborhood. And um. What, one of the things that, that concerns me is that you're not doing a permeable driveway. One of the things that was said in um somebody's report, I guess it was yours, that it wasn't practical. The word practical was used in terms of. I guess designing things so you could have. A, a permeable driveway. And. In this neighborhood, we need to be good neighbors to one another. And what concerns me. Is that you're going to have a lot of water coming off this house and to not a lot of space, but maybe instead going to the neighbors. And if there's a chance. That you can make this a permeable driveway, I think you need to. I don't know if we can make you do that. Um but I think you need to. I think you need to do the right thing by the neighbors and, 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 and this town. That's number one. Um so that's more of a comment.
Senator Kelly, you might, hello, you might want to ask um. Also ask for a question to the town attorney.
Town attorney? Can I ask you that question? We can't make him, make them build a permeable. We can't make him, make them build a permeable driveway, even if it might be the right thing to do.
Well, that is a mixed question of of policy and law. From the legal perspective, the code provides that the driveway is not required to be permeable if the slope is over five percent. And I believe I heard from our building permanent administrator, Mr. Lowmeyer, that the slope is seven percent. So the code does not require a permeable driveway under these circumstances when the pre-construction grade is steeper than five percent.
Sorry, Ron, if can I cut in, Debbie?
Yes, yes, please cut in.
To clarify, what I heard Doug say is that from the builders' plans for the new construction, the slope is six-point-nine percent. We do not have any official town measurements of the slope. We do not have the existing slope. We do not have any official measurements from anyone on the existing slope.
I need your clarification. Yeah, I misunderstood. Are we able to calculate the pre-construction slope, Mr. Lowmeyer?
Uh, uh, the town does not have any ability to do that. It can be requested of the applicant, but we don't have a transit or level or anything else that would measure that slope.
Do we have elevation markings on the site plan?
Well, that's what I use to calculate the slope, yes.
Oh, but the site plan shows proposed, not existing topo lines.
Well, the the site plan shows the existing driveway on the right side and proposed on the left, so they're not in the same location.
So Mr. Robertson, are you able to calculate the existing slope? Do you have sufficient data to do that?
I do. Bear with me. Existing slope is approximately four-and-a-half percent measured from the front of the proposed garage to the property line. The proposed slope, as Doug mentioned, is is seven percent based on the design of the house and situating the house at such an elevation that the first floor is not negatively affected by drainage and surface water, along with code requirements for separations from first floor to the top of foundation wall. Um, I will say, as it pertains to a permeable driveway, the the state requires that any permeable portion of a driveway be ten feet from a foundation wall. Um. So we wouldn't be able to make the first ten feet of the driveway permeable under those criteria. Um, the fact that two dry wells are flanking the driveway, um Montgomery County will not allow another infiltration device within proximity of their approved E S D devices. So we can't physically make the driveway permeable based on the driveway locations. Um. And the separation from the garage. And and even if we could, it would provide treatment for only twenty feet of of driveway length uh in a best-case scenario.
A quick question. Um, Mr. Robertson, you're flipping the driveway. It it's it's not, you're not putting it where it is now, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so could it be that you could design this so it's appropriate for the um driveway? If that was in your, you know, if you were sitting down to draw your house, maybe you could have done that to do the right thing by our neighborhood and our neighbors.
But can I interject here for a moment, please? Uh, it's Peter Lustig. Our our original design um had the driveway in the same location as the existing driveway. However, when we found out that we were are not allowed to project our front porch um into uh B R L, which apparently is a new uh code uh that the town has set forth, we had to completely redesign the house. And in in order to get the uh, you know, the house that we wanted um to fit on the lot and conform with all with the with the front B R L as well as the setbacks on the side and the rear yard. So that that meant we had to put the driveway on the other side of the house for reasons that I can't really explain now, but um it did have to do with you know, the overall design of the house, that you know, the 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 way the house worked. And um that's why it wound up on the on the other side of the house.
Okay, but my guess is that you guys are smart enough to be able to design this so you could have a permeable driveway. And um I'm just, that would be my push for you to do that. I think that is the right thing to do.
Well, the existing driveway slopes at about eight-and-a-half percent.
Okay, but you're not doing that one anyway. You've moved over to the other side of the house.
I'm just I'm just suggesting that if it were, if it were mirrored and the driveway were on the other side, it would, it would effectively be steeper.
But it's not, okay? It's you've moved the driveway. And now all I'm asking you to do, I don't know about the other council members, we're not there yet. Um, I'm asking you to rethink it, that's all. So my next question is your H H vac units. I I can't really, the plans are too hard for me to see online. And I want to make sure that these these H vac units, wherever you're putting them, um, how how are they going to affect the neighbors? And so that's my, that's my last question.
They're located behind the rear of the house.
Okay. All right, none of the neighbors have said anything about this. It's okay with them and anybody.
We're we're not allowed to put them in the side yard, are we?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure the neighbors are being taken care of in this. All right, those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the staff and the applicant for their time. I wanted to hear from um our stormwater expert, uh from Chris, uh who I believe is with and and Chris, I would, you know, welcome, you know, sort of your assessment of um your thinking behind the evaluation assessment that you submitted. And you have the letter and you've provided an explanation at the previous meeting, but if you can, for the record, walk us through why you believe in, based on your assessment, that this meets the code requirement. And then I have a second uh related question for either Matt or for Chris, um, which is related to an earlier question from one of the council members. Just an explanation of the phrase in the, you know, the town manager's cover memo on why it is not practicable practicable to redesign a house and drive it with the slope under five percent, some of which we've covered already, but I'd love to hear your perspective on it, Chris or Matt.
Sure, Chris Stepback can go first. Uh, it wasn't more so my ap- my agreement with the applicant was more centered around the reasons they gave rather than the ability to adjust the slope. The reasons being not being able to uh construct permeable paper driveway within ten foot of the house and also the location of the dry wells, which are bordering uh both sides of the driveway. So that was my reason for agreement in that. Um, I do believe it is possible to, however, you know, costly and sort of um um going backwards a little bit for the applicant to redesign the site to achieve a five percent slope, but my approval was centered around sort of the other supporting reasons that they gave.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Could you walk us through your full evaluation and why you felt uh why you concluded that they met the town's requirements as per the code?
For for the driveway?
For the overall application.
Um, they provided sufficient justification for the tiered list of uh you know, going practice by practice for treatment of the runoff and stormwater for the site. Uh, so they gave, in my opinion, sufficient justification for the E S D practices that they considered or the non structural practices that were considered for the treatment and why they ultimately selected uh dry wells for the treatment of the stormwater.
I know you didn't con- conduct this calculation, but do you have a perspective on whether this is an improvement over stormwater capture from the existing property?
Yes, uh, because the current property has zero stormwater treatment and this property is providing significantly more treatment for the site overall.
Okay, and and it it, what is the total sort of number of efforts or interventions this new home will have to mitigate stormwater?
The amount of stormwater that is being treated for this uh home uh is summed summed on the second page, so they are going to be providing um total of pull this up really fast. So is it summed here? Uh, five-hundred five-hundred-and-eighty-eight, excuse me, five-hundred-and-eighty-three cubic feet of stormwater treatment, so storage, uh, which is, you know, above the zero that the current lot provides.
And and the the number of interventions?
The nu- the number of treatment facilities they have are are four, so there are four separate dry wells.
Four separate dry wells?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Matt, thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate it and thank you for your time and your work with the town. Uh, Matt, you're the, you have summarized the sort of cumulative collective view of the town team and you're recommending. I think we lost Matt. Did we lose him? I don't see him on my end.
Uh. Let's see.
I'll wait for him. I'll give him, give him a minute to get back on. I know he had bad connectivity.
Oh, he's back.
He's back. Oh.
He's back, see him.
Matt, can you hear me?
He he uh you got booted, he's reconnecting now, so.
Okay.
Hi.
Good day. Matt, did you hear the?
All right.
Mr. Town Manager, did you hear the question?
You here.
Matt, your connection is not very good, let you know. Um. Do you want to try back?
Let me see if his phone answers. Let's let's just, let's just wait another minute.
Sounds good.
Did you, did you have any other questions for?
I did have a question for for Matt.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, perfect. Matt, uh, quickly, uh.
I'm sorry.
You and the town staff recommended um uh that the the design, stormwater design fits the criteria of the code and that this is a proposal is within code. Could you kind of summarize for us for the record uh your recommendation and the team's recommendation?
Yeah, so uh the the town attorney uh sort of touched on on this in terms of the way that I was thinking based on conversations with um our stormwater expert and with our building administrator, but whereas with setback requirements, for example, it's it's very clear, it's it's eight feet or it's it's beyond eight feet or it's it the 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 house can only be twenty-five feet. Uh, it needs to be at least twenty-five five feet from the 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 front of the property line. Um, and that's it. With stormwater, there's, our code requires that a one-year storm event um be managed based on um the state's uh calc- uh state's formula. And it it it's a lot of it is based on the 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 fir- the turn of phrases, the the best managed practice to the maximum extent practicable. And I think based on the explanations that we received from the applicant, based on the review um that overall, this project did capture the amount of water that was necessary on site. Um, that it's it's hard to say it's impossible to capture more or it's impossible to not design the driveway to be under five percent, for example. Um, but that given the constraints of the property, given the constraints that are placed on the structures based on state regulations, et cetera, there's a lot of moving parts in there and that it was uh, at the end of the day, that it did capture the water that was required. And um as as Mr. Step said, it's it's a property that currently doesn't have any stormwater management on it. Um, so that factors in a little bit as well that um it's 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 hitting the the criteria of the code.
All right, thank you, Matt. No more questions, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. So given the complexity of this application, I I'm going to just run through if you see if anybody has any follow-up. Council President Serco, do you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Jeffrey. For task engineering, on the volume of water created by a one-year storm event, when I go to page two of your drawing in that table, very useful table, for example, roof A, six-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet. When I multiply that by two-point-six inches for a one-year storm event and divide by twelve to go from inches to feet, I come out with one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-eight cubic feet. But you indicate this table says one-hundred-and-thirty-one. There's a similar discrepancy for all of the remaining roofs. Can you explain what's happening? I'm probably doing something wrong, but I don't understand.
Yeah, the calculation should also be applying a uh a runoff volume factor um which is a, ends up being point-nine-five. So if you multiply your number by point-nine-five, that's the one-year calculation under the state design manual.
What what does, well, I guess that was what I was trying to get at in my initial questioning. So there is a point-nine-five factor. But runoff from what? From the roof? Everything that's on the roof is going to go into the pipes, into the dry walls.
That's 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 just the state's calculation for for determining the one-year volume.
Yeah, I mean, Steve, think of it this way, five percent evaporation, something like that.
Okay, it's okay. I I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Barr. Do you have any further questions?
No further questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller.
No, thank you.
And Councilor Kumar.
Yeah, one uh follow-up question for Chris. Chris, I forgot to ask you, do you think they could have uh made any other intervention to mitigate um the stormwater runoff um from your expert opinion?
Such as in lieu of the dry wells or to capture the runoff from the uh driveway?
I I I I I leave it up to you. Are there any other interventions do you believe they could have made based on, so to speak, the constraints that the town manager uh alluded to? In your expert opinion, do you believe any other interventions were possible? Uh, alluded to, in your expert opinion, do you believe any other interventions were possible here?
I I think that the way it's designed would be how I would have designed this lot. I'm not gonna say that they could not have done um rain guards or something, but it would have been a lot of additional um. Work to divert. Like the applicant's engineers say, a lot of additional work to divert off-site drainages, then you're concentrating flow at additional points. On your site, so you're gonna have to disperse that flow, you're also sending. A new concentrated flow to areas that weren't receiving concentrated flow before, so there's a whole lot of um. Factors that you need to consider, you know, not just, you know, treating runoff from our side or stormwater from our side, but how are we gonna be affecting the? Lots that are adjacent to us, how are we gonna be handling off-site or upstream runoff, um, so. There might been the possibility of doing some additional things or different things, but this is the most logical. Uh, path to take for development and providing stormwater for this site.
And Chris, you. Go, sorry, sorry. Sorry about that, Robin, um, Chris, uh.
Yes, sir.
You have uh uh for when did you first review this in April?
Uh, let me look at my records real fast, I believe so.
And uh. So let me.
March.
Yeah, let me ask my question again, sorry about that, could you tell us uh? You know, how many times have you reviewed this application and and when did you first review it, and when was the last time you reviewed it?
The last time I looked at it was the just last week when the they had the uh response to the council's comments. Uh, which was more of not reviewing the plan, but reviewing the responses, the first time I reviewed this was back in March.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. There was one other time too.
Well, I believe, thank you, I know I.
Yeah, I had questions of Chris, yeah, uh, how do dry wells handle um? Wander discharge for neighboring properties onto the lot?
Well, they they're below ground, so they're um. They're really, the the water that's flowing is not.
They don't capture it.
Not not really, because the water will have to um percolate through the topsoil layer that is on top of the dry well. Um, so that, so it it potentially will catch some of the runoff. But um, the the water that's coming off your rooftop is much, much quicker. Um, going through the pipes is gonna gonna fill up faster uh with that enough. Your time is your time of concentration.
Second question is, when capacity is exped- exceeded in dry wells, like uh when they sold up, for example, and they got much less capacity, where does the water go?
The water will be coming over the over overflow relief, so it'll be discharging to the adjacent grade uh next to the house.
Right, so what I'm trying to say is that. Rain gardens actually are not. Doing any worse than dry wells, uh, in fact, in terms of, in fact, probably better than dry wells and funding handing runoff from neighbors' property. And uh. Their capacity can get exceeded in the same way dry well capacity can get exceeded, and then the the water has to be shuttled elsewhere, that's true. But there's really no difference.
There's intricacies of 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 both, um, yeah, like it, but the dry dry wells are um. The more logical choice for these these types of dense uh these neighborhoods, uh, the rain garden is easier to maintain and to. Uh, you know, see if there if it's functioning correctly, but also rain gardens traditionally that I've seen for. Homeowners, new owners move in, they don't like this low area that's piling in their yard and they'll they'll fill them in, so. Uh, there's has to be vigilance kept in in that regards as well, um.
Is that your final question, Councilor?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments, we ask that those making public comments, please be respectful of the council's time. Keep all testimony and evidence relevant to the application at hand and not be repetitive. Mister ten manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to comment at this time?
Yeah, it looks like Adam Levitin has joined us uh tonight, so um, Adam, uh, just make sure to unmute yourself, but uh if you wanna go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone, my name is Adam Levitin, I live at fifty-five twenty-nine Trent, so. Just across the street from the the property in question, and we are um looking forward to eventually having new neighbors in the property. Um, I did want, there are two issues I wanted to bring up, um. First, I was very glad to hear that Mister Lustig has agreed to test and. Uh, treat appropriately any asbestos found on the property. Um, I was hoping that there might be a similar agreement regarding lead. Um, that, you know, I certainly there are extensive regulations about lead abatement if you are doing renovations. But um, I am not aware of um regulations that apply if you're doing a total demolition. Yet the hazards should be the same, if there's le- uh, if you're doing a demolition. And a pre nineteen seventy-eight building, there's probably going to be lead in the paint. And if you're using a wrecking ball, that's gonna get in the air, so um. You know, my my casual research on this uh indicates that there are some municipalities. That um are require, uh, not uh not in Maryland, but um but outside of Maryland, there are some municipalities that. Do have um some requirements for doing demolition regarding lead for complete demolition. And um I'm uh hoping that Mister Lustig would be willing to consider. Um, things like um water application to spray down, spray down the demolition material. Using a picker method for demolition rather than a wrecking ball. Um, having fencing to keep dust from blowing out of the property and then. Making sure that the the trucks that carry away the wa- waste are covered and are not dripping uh water that would have le- lead dust in it that would then. When it dries, blow around the neighborhood.
Well, thank you, let's have Mister Lust respond to that.
Well, um. Yeah, it's it's um. It's difficult uh to to um to to take a house down and and um. In such a confined um. Situation, um, generally, we we um. You know, we pick we pick it apart with a with an excavator. And and load it into uh either a truck or a roll-off. Um, and. I think it's important to 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 mitigate the dust created by the uh. By the by the raising um with, you know, with water, but but not to the point where we're we're soaking the uh. You know, the property and um uh have runoff, um. Dust is always is it's 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 unavoidable, um, we do the best we can to to, you know, to mitigate that, but um. It's generally a very, very fast process, it it's only takes a day, I would say. Um, uh, maybe two. And uh then then it's over. So, um. We do the best we can to to minimize the impact uh on the neighborhood. But there are, you know, obviously considerations.
So, any other issues, Mister Levitin?
Yes, the 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 other one was, um. There is a large Japanese maple in the middle of the front lawn, it's a beautiful tree. And uh if my reading of the uh plans is correct, it's supposed, it uh it's now slated for removal. And if there's any way that that tree could be saved, and it looks to me that maybe just moving one of the dry wells to uh. A few feet to the right under the existing driveway might do the trick. That would certainly from the um from an aesthetic standpoint, do quite a bit to minimize the impact of the construction.
Yeah, I agree, I I like that tree a lot, um, I I'm gonna have to um defer to Jeff about um. The im- the the location of the dry well, um, I I would like to save that tree, um. I always thought it to be, um, you know, something that would enhance the the property. Jeff, is that? Is that possible?
Um. I mean, there's some grading, there's some grading planned in that area. Um, there's separation requirement from the dry well to the to the proposed utilities. Um, right now, it's it's right at the minimum separation requirement from the future sewer connection, so. You know, technically, the dry well can't be shifted to the right. Um, that's not to say that, Peter, you couldn't make efforts to try and and retain the tree. You know, during construction as best you can.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I I if if I if I may just chime in really quickly on that too, um. Because Dr. Feather may want to address that, I think that he he did not recommend. Protection of that tree in part because of some. Early signs of decay, um, so. I told where you you might be able to address that question as well. I be- I believe that's uh tree number six on your report.
Uh, yeah, the tree has a a big cavity at the base that's active. So I don't know, you know. You might go to a lot of trouble to save it and it's might be on its way out anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mister Levitin, did you have any other?
No, that that's everything, thank you.
Thank you for for joining us tonight and and uh thank you, Mister Lustig, for um. Being responsive to the request, before uh we move on, let me just ask the ten attorney to clarify for everybody. What the law actually is about lead paint.
So at the federal level, Mister Mayor. As Mister Levitin noted. Contractors do have to comply with certain removal rules when they're. Renovating or partially demolishing, but a complete demolition is not subject to the EPA requirements. I cannot state whether there are any D N R requirements. I'd have to research that, that's at the Maryland level. As Mister Levitin noted, and as we discussed a bit at our last meeting, there are some municipalities like Cherry Chase Village. That do require certain testing prior to demolition or lead paint, asbestos rodents. Not required by the county. Is my understanding. So.
Okay, well, thank you, so so Mister Levitin, even though. Uh, it's not a requirement in our town. It does sound like that Mister Lustig is gonna um make every effort to limit the impact of the demolition, so. So by coming tonight, it was it it was very helpful in this regard. Okay, thank you, Mi- Mister Ten Manager, has any, did anyone else wish to speak?
I don't believe there are any other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, everyone, so this concludes the public portion of the hearing, the record is now closed. And the council may now discuss and deliberate the findings of fact and conclusions of law. And may take a position on the application, and I will turn it over to our distinguished council president to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you all for joining in on a rainy, stormy night. I want to to lead off by uh. Addressing one of your questions, Debbie, about the size of the house. To set that that factors into our considerations of what flexibility there is. From the drawings. The um. Trying to pull this up, there's just so much information here. Well, sorry, I I lost track, so I'll just, I'll skip that, um. But but that the. The house actually has so much of the um the property that the rear porch. Is not enclosed, because it was enclosed. Uh, then that square footage. Would would count against the lot coverage constraints. But because, even though it has roof on it, since it's not uh. Screened in. It's it doesn't count against lot coverage. Um, my. My thoughts are, um. I think that. I I agree that this house would provide more stormwater management than. Exists with the current house. But that said, I'm frankly, um, personally, uh. Disappointed that, um. The the arc, the. The team did not uh. Consider any of our recommendations, so basically what we're looking at is the exact same proposal as we looked at a month ago. With explanations for why they. Couldn't put in a rain garden, they couldn't put in permeable papers to driveway. That the house just has to be this house, and I. I don't care for that. Um, it's just my initial thoughts, let's go around, Robin.
Yeah, I was disappointed for the same reason that it has unchanged, it's not changed from the prior application, uh, it's just justified. Uh, in other ways. And. You know, in thinking of our code, the idea was to try to introduce different mitigation measures into a similar property. That way you spread the um. Benefits and disadvantages across different mitigation measures, which means that it's gonna be more sustainable over time than concentrating on only one, which. Is going to cause problems down the line, one way or the other, and. This, of course, is concentrating it on one system. Uh, which which bothers me, it is, it way it is complying with our code at the same time, I have to say that is true. Um, so it leaves me with a little bit of a dilemma there, um. So I'll leave it at that and get other people's reactions too. Now, we we'll see on permeable driveways, I I wouldn't fuss too much about it, I mean. There's a slope on that land, and even if they can get the driveway down to four percent, it's not really gonna capture very much water at four percent. Um, it it permeable driveways are not that great at capturing water, frankly. And certainly with a slope, there's just not much value in doing it, so I I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold it up for that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for. Um, Kabir?
I think Debbie goes next.
Debbie, thank you, yeah, thank you very much, sorry, Debbie.
It's okay, thanks, Kabir. Um, I find it disappointing, I just feel like it's another big house. Built to as much as they can put on on the land with no real, um. No real thought to the people around them, behind them, in front of them, their their neighbors going down the block and the water that's gonna rush down. And I I find this disappointing, and um. And and I think they could have. Made a house, maybe a little smaller, but they could have made this better. To be better for our neighborhood, so I'm kinda, I'm disappointed in it. Okay, Kabir, turn turn.
You know, listening to all of you, I'm thinking, we may wanna do Steve another working session and reflection on. Broadly the stormwater court, but also, you know, reminding everyone, we've made truly historic code changes in the last twelve to eighteen months. And so I think it's worth. Reflecting and thinking through whether they're adding up. And whether we believe they will add up, or we don't believe they'll add up, then then I'm gonna achieve the outcomes we want for our town. As elected officials, we need to revisit them. Um, you know, so I I think we we need, we need to invest that time. Perhaps in the fall. In the coming months to do that. I think here, two things have happened, one, it it is in compliance with the code as as Robin observed. And additionally, I feel quite satisfied by Chris's assessment, he is our. In-house expert, um, you know, and he's had time with this application, it's not a rushed thing. That's why I was asking him that question, there wasn't sort of. A rush thing, he's had time with it, I think his answers were compelling for my taste. And yes, I think I think I can see in the margins, potentially more could be done here. But I think. We, you know, it it gets us in territory that at least I'm technically not comfortable with, and I think we have to. From a procedural perspective, I always prefer to. Build, you know, compelling sort of reasons based on the expert opinion, which frankly, we pay for through taxpayer dollars. Uh, so for all of those reasons, I've, you know, I hear all your disappointment, obviously, so all of you expressing that. I I I do think that requires us to go back and. At least one of the things we definitely should do is go back and. Kind of come to some assessment and alignment on whether the code is adding up for what we want, I mean. You know, Debbie, your. You you know, Debbie, your question about lot coverage, right? We've come come to that multiple times. I think, okay, maybe that's what we want. Is that what the town wants? Then we should we should go at it. And make sure our code reflects that. And then revisit the other changes we made, which, again, I remind you what truly are truly unprecedented and historic. Uh, for our town in terms of how we've tightened tighten the code. So. That's where my thoughts are. Steve, I'm sorry if that's not. Conclusive enough, but that's where I'm landing.
Well, that's 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 well said. I think everyone is. Um. Trying to grab with a number of issues, including as you pointed out. These are new codes and we're learning, receiving feedback from how. Whether or not we consider those codes to be effective at meeting what we perceive to be the town's needs. I saw me hear a little bit more from Robin about. Why he thinks this meets our code. If. They're not following the tiered approach.
Yeah, well, no, they are following the tiered approach. They 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 have um. Gone through the level one tier uh landscaping approaches and say they 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 don't work for them in this environment. And, you know, I don't entirely agree with their rationale. It's true, but on the other hand, they did it. Um, and so that does, in fact, comply with our code. Um. And so I. I I I'm. I think I have to pass it is what it comes down to, but I do absolutely, you know. Is we we do require a maintenance agreement. I want to spell it out on this one that that we do want to maintain this agreement for the drywalls. It's going to, you know, what I will say is that. It needs to be submitted before the permit is cleared by the town, and it needs to be reviewed by a building engineer as as appropriate. Um. And that is. The extra I would add.
And and Steve and Robin, I think there's some truth to Adams, uh, the neighbors uh. You know, recommendation, and I think Peter, uh, the applicant's observation that it's a tight space. I think if there is a way, I don't know if Ron can advise us that when we come down to it. To require, you know. Sort of. Demolition and construction and debris removal procedures. That are submitted, um, you know. Uh, at at the appropriate time for town staff review. I I think that the. The construction process itself is very disruptive for the town because we are so close to each other. And we don't really regulate that. We don't regulate the process itself. And I think at some point we should we should come back to that because they it can be a year, two years, given some extensions we've given recently. And it is an ongoing disruption. Uh, and so I think Adams will make me think. At least in this case, we could potentially stipulate some sort of um. You know. Could demolition and debris management plan. I'm just making that up. I apologize. I'm not an expert here, but. Something that that I think would satisfy the town staff. Along those lines. So just to add to Robin's list of. Potential conditions for approval.
Okay, thank you, Kabir. Any additional thoughts, Debbie?
Um. I have a lot of thoughts. I just. I guess I'm really stymied by this because. I don't think this is appropriate. I think it's uh. You know, when are when are builders gonna come in? And do what's right? And. That, yeah, you know, Kabir, maybe Robin said, or you said, I don't know that this is a tight space. Yeah, it's a tight space. So make your house smaller, so it's not so tight. You know, make it right. And so I guess I wonder, maybe this is a question for Ron. Even if it meets the code as we've specified. Do I have to approve this this permit?
Yes, if you find that it meets the code, then the permit has to be. Granted, so with respect to a a permit review. It's an up or down question, either it complies or not. With a variance, on the other hand, there is some subjective application of right degree. With the permit, it's it's purely objective. Does the application comply? Yes or no? That said, as previously discussed, there is. A reasonableness requirement built into the tiering evaluation, so the council can determine whether the tiers have been reasonably considered.
So. So, Mr. Town Attorney, could you also advise the council? Uh. You just said it's an up or down if it meets the code, but what, to what extent can they impose conditions on the applicant?
Sure, so conditions can be attached to the permit. To protect the public health, safety and welfare, and with respect to Councilmember Kumar's. Suggestion, one such condition could be that. All demolition shall be conducted in accordance with applicable law with respect to asbestos. And lead-based paint-containing materials. As the applicant stated tonight, the applicant will have samples taken of the roof and various materials on the inside for asbestos. And undertake those remediation efforts. Suggested by the lab and required by law before demolition commences.
So with that, counsel, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Well. First off, I I think we just we might agree to disagree. So I read the code as. All reasonable opportunities for using nonstructural practices must be exhausted before structural practices are implemented. Not just that they've been. Considered and analyzed. I think. I don't I so from my perspective, just to share with us the council, I do not believe that. Um. The the. Constructor here has. Exhausted all reasonable opportunities. I also think that with regards to the driveway, which is a separate issue than the stormwater management. Our code is explicit that all new replacement driveways must be constructed of permeable materials. Requirement shall not apply the following. The driveway had a sub of five degrees or more. So I think that. I mean. If if they wish to do it without permeable pavers, that's that's okay. I think they need to request a waiver. And they have not requested a waiver. And their own engineer indicated that the. Slope of the soil as is is four and a half degrees. So those are my last two thoughts. I guess what I think is maybe um. Um, you can put together a proposal in favor, but I think I'll be voting against it.
Steve, I didn't understand the first part of your comment. About. Your reading of the code.
That. All nonstructural methods such as a rain garden. Must be exhausted. And. All I've heard is that the space is tight. Maybe they'd have to put a swell in. Maybe that would cost a little more money. Maybe there's not enough space because they have dry wells. They have all their dry well sizes because of their other space constraints. Um, they. The the architect. The. Contractor has um made a large number of uh trade-off decisions. And and that's okay. But my interpretation. Is that those trade-off decisions resulted in. Um. Failure to exhaust all nonstructural options for dealing with stormwater management.
Yeah, e- except, you know, the one thing I would. Highlight. And something I try to keep in mind is that. The applicant has been responding to our code and the feedback from the town team, including. The town's stormer expert who commented and gave his testimony. On how he felt that was addressed. Now, we. We can revisit. Whether those procedures were to our satisfaction. But in the lead up to this particular application, you know. It's not only that they just did this in a vacuum. You know, and they had since April. An approval process, and I think our stormor expert has reviewed it. So I'm just wondering, you know. I I just don't want it to be my personal opinion. You know, we've gone through a process and uh our stormor expert has given his perspective on it. And. You know, concluded. Uh, that this is the best set of interventions that they could make and. Uh, we can. We can this personally disagree, I guess, about it, but I I'm just. You know, I don't see that my role here. Um. You know, i- is to kind of. Follow the process and follow the code.
Right.
And so that's what I understand where you're coming from.
Well. A great great discussion. Um. And perhaps I heard our. I heard our Bayview consultant a little differently. My takeaway was. That.
Be be a Bayland, right?
Bayland, sorry, I said Bayview, Bayland. Um. That the contractor. Did a thorough job. They made good calculations. They made some. Not unreasonable design decisions. But that was all working on the assumption that it has to be this one huge house, for example. Um, I heard the. Bayland say. Um. Could it could it be done better? Yeah, probably. At least that was my interpretation of it. Could they do the driveway? Yes, they could definitely do a driveway at five degrees or less. These are this is what I heard our her guy say.
I mean, if we want a smaller house, then we need a code that leads us to that. We don't have that code right now. Our code does not lead us to smaller homes automatically.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to highlight that. That's not, you know, we we and we we this is now maybe second or third time this has come up. So we we should in a working session, like as I was saying at the start of of my comments. Would need to tackle this. Um. You know, because. I I think we have a a one intent. That is not fully expressed through. Where the court is now, despite all the changes we've made. And that's what I was trying to highlight. We've made, and I've gone along with that. With the view that we would see the outcome that would. Allow us to, you know, constructively and meaningfully move forward. In our town with new homes and upgraded homes and. I mean, part of the reason we did the stormwater mitigation efforts and the code update was. So that we have stormwater mitigation. In the town, right? It's to introduce it at the level at the point of new construction, which I think is progress. Um.
Mm-hmm.
But if we if we are not getting to the outcome we want of smaller homes. How we define them, then I think that's a working session topic to really get to the bottom of that.
But just just clarify, I'm. I'm not advocating here for smaller homes. I'm advocating for. What I believe would be better stormwater management. For example, I'm sorry, if I just just finished. You have a flat roof. On on your house, uh, Kabir. You know, we I've heard another contractor say. Flat roofs are not possible. You can't build a house with a flat roof. But you have a house with a flat roof. I think we could have. Some more houses with flat roofs in Somerset. Have the same square footage, all that, and just be. Different designs.
No, I'm I'm agreeing with you that we can achieve things that we want. I'm saying this is not the moment for that. I'm saying we should. Figure that out. And and. Find our way to express that in the code, so then we are empowered to enforce it. Uh, right? That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that that I'm agree with Kabir in fact here. What I what I'm trying to say on this one is that their design is within our code. And the design. In fact, includes that slight increase in the driveway so as they can get up the two steps, basically, to to the the that they're putting into the house. That changes the slope from four and a half percent to six percent, but it's not a deliberate change in the slope to get around our requirement. It is simply a factor of the design of the house that I accept. But I also.
You don't really know that. You don't really know that.
I I I think it's a reasonable assumption in this case. I really do. I don't think it's an attempt to get around our code. But I'll tell you practically that that the amount of water captured at four and a half percent is not very much and not much less. Than the amount captured at six percent. You 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 you're just not doing very well with a permeable driveway at a slope like that. Um, so it you there's we wouldn't gain much. By 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 in putting that requirement in. That's what I'm saying. And I do I think it is reasonable that that they're doing what they're doing there. Uh, to to capture stormwater. Yes, I would have preferred them to have put in a rain garden. I think it's a better mitigation measure because rain gardens. In fact, expand their ability to capture water over time because plants grow. Drywells do not grow. They in fact shrink um over time. But enough said, I'm ready to make a motion for approval.
Before.
Okay, let me get necessary document. Um. All right, so. I recommend that we approve the uh construction of a home at fifty-five twenty-eight uh Trent Street. And the request for demolition permit, a building permit, a dumpster permit. An HVAC permit uh and a driveway. Apron permit. Uh, now here come the conditions. Recommend the applicant provide the town with a wall check survey, a building height survey, um, or also approve. Follow the um. Arborist's uh requirements for the management of trees. And the building engineers um. Requirements to. I add to that that we want. A maintenance plan for the drywells uh submitted prior to final approval of the permit by the town. That is has been reviewed by our engineer. And add to that, Kabir, could you put in language that you want on um management of the construction of the house?
Uh, Ron has the language. He mentioned.
All demolition shall be conducted in accordance with applicable law with respect to asbestos and lead-based paint-containing materials. Applicant will have samples of the roof and various materials on the inside tested for asbestos. And take such remediation efforts suggested by the lab and required by law before any demolition commences.
All right, so those are the conditions. Thank you.
Okay, is there?
Second.
Hold on a second. Mr. Town Attorney, is that motion legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Councilor Kumar is seconding.
Yes, I'm seconding with with a strong hope that all of us will will approve this because. It is, you know, in compliance with with the code and with the process that I've gone through, but. Again, you know, I am ready to work with all of you to make sure that our code gets to the point we wanted to get to.
Okay, is there discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it's a tie vote, so it fails for the lack of a.
What?
Majority.
Well, Mr. Mayor. You vote to break the tie.
I I don't, but I don't have to vote, so I'm not voting. And we're missing a council member tonight. So thank you.
Jeffrey, you can vote to be break the tie tonight.
But I but I choose not to.
That's Jeffrey's call.
Motion fails for lack of. Lack of majority. Okay, thank you. The next item. To consider approval of the building permit application submitted by Mark and Julie Oxley. For the construction of a garage in the rear of the property located at forty-five fifteen Dorset Avenue. And we will begin now. Today is August seventh, twenty twenty-three. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council. To consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Mark and Julie. Oxley for the construction of a garage in the rear of the property located at forty-five fifteen Dorset Avenue. As reminders to all participants and observers, this hearing is being audibly recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council from the podium. And by speaking into the microphone, state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff. Will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Afterward, the applicant will present the application. Then the Somerset Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council. Will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions, and may make a motion on a permit decision. We will now begin this hearing. With a presentation of the staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, and I just uh off right off the bat, I do know that the applicant is was unable to make the meeting tonight. Um. But uh, the applicant submitted a a permit application for a uh building. Uh, building construction permit to erect an accessory building. Uh, specifically garage in the rear yard of the property. The proposed garage uh, is going to be, is proposed to be constructed on an already existing parking pad. The building administrator reviewed the plans. And confirmed that the proposed structure complies with all setback and lot coverage requirements for accessory buildings. In the town code. Um, and although the proposed structure is bigger than one hundred fifty square feet. The town code provides stormwater management shall be provided for an increase in impervious surface. And because the garage is proposed to be constructed on. Already existing impervious surface. The stormwater code isn't applicable. And uh, there are no trees that are being proposed for removal, um, but the. Town Arbors has submitted a tree protection report for a couple of trees that are right near the property line. Um, and I think that concludes my section. I don't know if Doug or Tolbert have anything to add for the uh, staff report.
Uh, this is Doug. I had nothing to add.
Uh, no, I'm, I've, um, uh, there's a tree protection plan that's in the packet.
Okay, so thank you. So the applicant is in here, I assume from the staff. Uh, that they were fine with your uh, recommendation.
Yes, uh, uh, based on, based on the fact that it complies with the town code, I recommend approval of the permit application.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you. This seems straightforward.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Hallow.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
I think that was for me, but, but no, no, no comments.
Okay, thank you. So I think in this case, I think you're prepared to make a motion.
Yes. I move that the council approve a building permit application submitted by Mark and Julie Oxley for the construction of the garage in the rear of the property located at forty-five fifteen Dorset Avenue.
Second.
Is your discussion? I should have asked, I, Town Attorney, if that was legally and technically sufficient.
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
I heard a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. Next item. To consider approval of the following town tree, removal of the following town trees. Uh, a red oak at forty-seven twenty-one Essex Avenue, a pin oak at forty-nine twenty-one Essex Avenue. A sugar maple at forty-eight oh one Essex Avenue and a. Pin oak at fifty-eight oh three Warwick Place. I will turn it over to our distinguished town arborist.
Uh, two of the trees are dead and uh, the uh, sugar maple and the pin oak. And uh, forty-one twenty-one Essex is um, a red oak that's uh, has um. Badly scorched, it's losing lots of wood and uh, it's hazardous. And forty-nine twenty-one is a pin oak that lost a couple of large branches during the past storm. And um, probably needs to come down at this point because it's hazardous.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Oops, no questions. Thank you very much.
And Councilor Barr.
A. Sort of more general question, Tolbert. We've had a number of trees come down, obviously, um, in storm and even without a storm. Do you have all the equipment that you need or is there any other tools you want that would be able? That would help you evaluate the health of trees going forward? That's what it was done to. Can we get you anything else?
Um. I, there's, eh. The most of our evaluations are visual, looking for outward signs of decay or. What would make a tree hazardous?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I mean, there's no, I use a mallet sometimes or a hammer to see if the tree's hollow. So there's nothing specific, you know, that would help the process.
All right, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
Oh, but uh, you know what I'm gonna ask?
Go for it.
I, I can, I can jump in and answer that one because I know Linda.
No, no, I wanna hear, I wanna hear.
Okay, all right.
I wanna hear it over.
Wait a minute, ask the question for the benefit of.
Or, I don't know, what is this, eight months running, asking the same question?
Ask, please ask it, please ask.
Have you checked with residents? Those properties are abutting, these trees are, these trees are adjacent.
Oh, oh, the one there in front. Uh, actually, the forty-nine, forty-seven twenty-one and forty-nine twenty-one were requested by the residents. To look at them. And the other two are dead. Um, so um, I didn't specifically knock on doors or anything there, but um. The other two have requested to have the trees examined.
So, but thank you for that. I mean, this does remind me, which is the other thing I've been asking for, for a year, which is. And the recent sort of downing of trees also reminded me of that. Which is how are we really accounting for our trees, the database that you've been working on? Now for a year, I think it would be good to. Action that sooner rather than later, because my understanding is that's the foundation of how we manage and maintain. These trees in our town. Um, so the, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it'd be good to come back to this at a later time. We do need to get that squared away.
Why don't you let the arborist. Uh, answered that good question and then the town manager wants to answer something too.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been um, evaluating software. I got held up on that because of the death of my mother, believe it or not. Just because I've never had time to really. I've been going back and forth to Albuquerque for the past, what, eight months? Um, that's gonna end uh, this month. So I can spend more time on that and, and start actually working on it. But the, the so, the software, it surprisingly to me, the software is. Is not that good, the ones that are available. And they all have drawbacks. They're not what, you know, what I would like to use. So you kinda have to use what's there. Uh, I was encouraged yesterday, apparently Oregon State. Has contracted with uh, Planet Geo. Um, and using their software. And the state actually provides that to municipalities to use free of charge. So that kinda gives, that's the one I've been looking at lately and that's actually gave me some encouragement that they would commit to that. Um, so that's probably the one I'm gonna go with. I've actually had trials and just haven't had time to, to spend time on it and they've given me some leeway on that too. Um, so. Um, in, into, the end of August and September, I should have something up and running.
Okay, I appreciate that and of course my deepest.
And then, and I think the town manager wanted to respond.
Oh, I was just going to clarify and also say that when the, the arborist submitted the trees. For his recommendation of removal, that Linda put together a notification that was sent to all of the uh, properties there as well.
Perfect, thank you, Linda.
But also, Councilor Kumar, and this is an issue that was raised several years ago by a resident. Uh, in Essex, that we do need to look at our code. In terms of the, what the notice requirements are for trees, because all, all the, that the staff is doing is just. On their own, you know, they decided to do it. But, but I do think that we need to look at the, at what the requirements are so that. Down the line, that will be followed in organized way. So, so we've. We will be putting that on a future work session um, topic and.
Yeah, the other thing I'm doing, it's not in a code or, but Matt and I talked about is I actually post the trees that they're gonna be removed. And the reason why.
Right, and I.
Yeah.
Right, and all that, but all that should probably be spelled out either in code or regulation. So I'm glad that Councilor Kumar keeps bringing it up because. I thought we should do that for years, so thank you. Uh, and now the hearing portion, I see that a resident has a comment. Mr. Cana.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, it, it relates not necessarily to a tree removal, but I think uh. Uh, Matt is aware that at five-five-two-six Uppingham. There is a very large limb that is hanging precariously. From the stor, from the previous storm. And I think uh, I think the, the, the town office has been notified of it and. We're quite concerned that this tree limb. Might fall at any time, and I don't know if it fell today with the wind, but anyway, it's sort of dangling in the canopy. Um, and it would be great to know what the plans are to, to take care of that. Thank you.
I, I can, I can, I can speak to that. Um. I, I asked uh, our contractor to take the limb out and they came and it's resting on a wire, a, a Pepco wire. So I have notified Pepco that the limb needs to be removed by them. And I'll reach out to them again. That was a couple of days ago. I'll reach out again and make sure it gets done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Town Manager, did anybody else indicate they wanted to speak about this topic?
No, no other public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Council. Are you prepared to make a motion? Councilor Kumar, you're Mr. Tree.
I can uh, motion to approve. Removal of the following town trees um, as listed in the town agenda, the council agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. The next item is the building administrators' report. Mr. Lemire.
At forty-five fifteen Cumberland, the property owner submitted a building from application to the county and to the town. And as we discussed last month, the re-subdivision plat for that property. Is being reviewed by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, so that project is on hold right now. Uh, at forty-nine hundred Cumberland Avenue, that permit expires on August fifteenth. It appears that the work will be completed by that date or within a couple of days afterwards, so we're keeping an eye on that one. At forty-eight sixteen Essex, uh, the town, they're making some additions to the existing house. The permit was issued on May sixth and work is underway. Forty-eight hundred grand from, they're also making additions to the house. That town permit was issued on July eighth. And at fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey Street, uh, that house has been sold. The owner plans on tearing it down and building a new house, but they haven't submitted anything to the town or the county yet. At fifty-five twenty-two Uppingham, the council extended that building permit until December thirty-first. And at fifty, uh, fifty-six thirteen Warwick Place, that construction is ongoing. The applicant has submitted a revised application to construct a deck at the rear of the house. We've provided them with comments and waiting to hear back, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
None for me, thanks Doug.
Thank you, thank you, Doug. Next item, public hearing motion to consider the adoption of a resolution establishing a social media policy, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you. Um, so uh, we discussed this, I think, at the work session um. With the new website going live, um. Our deputy town manager has also been working on establishing social media platforms for the town. Um, so with those launching, um, we wanted to ensure that there was a um, safe and productive way to. To be able to monitor those platforms and so, uh, he's worked with the town attorney. Using Montgomery County's social media policy as um, a guide. And created the following policy for us. And so, once this is approved, then we will um, also. Go back to the state and amend our document retention policy as well, so. That's kind of step two of this process for us, but tonight it's just a resolution adopting the policy. That allows us to uh, monitor the website as it says in the policy.
Thank you, and does the deputy town manager wish to add anything?
I think Matt covered it pretty much.
Thank you, this is a, this is an historic moment, our deputy's first major initiative. Thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Councilor Barr.
Just one question, which is that, is there any plan for any moderation on any of social media channels? In other words, is there somebody reviewing the comments before they're posted?
Uh, I can answer that, so uh, currently, the comments will, cannot be reviewed uh. Until they're posted, but after they're posted, that's when the social media policy kicks in. And we can examine them and make sure they fit within that policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Heller.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
You know, I'm, I'm very happy that we are doing this, but I have to say the policy doesn't say anything about what is permitted or not permitted. Because part of these policies on social media is. You know, to effectively have some guardrails. Around what gets communicated because people tend, there, there've been incidents of folks, you know. I don't know if you say tweeting anymore since the name has changed, but um, you know, they've been XXing, I guess. Um.
But why don't you let the staff in?
Yeah, I'm wondering, I mean, I, I'm fine, let's move forward, but just wanted to highlight that. It doesn't really establish any guardrails.
It's a very good question. Remember, we want to just get a baseline, you know, a base policy and then. When issues come up, it can be amended, but let's let the staff answer your question, your very good question.
Are you, are you referring to the resolution itself or the policy?
Uh. I, I, I only have one document.
If you look on page ninety-two, sorry, Matt, go ahead, ninety-two in PDF.
The, 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 and um, my apologies if it, if it came, if it's. Either hard to read or if I had uh, uploaded it incorrectly, but. Page one and two is a generic res, that uses generic kind of resolution language. And then page three and four is more descriptive um, policy on. The types of comments that will and will not be um, accepted.
And there's seven examples of no-nos, so that the policy provides that the town will. Delete comments that are off-topic or disruptive advertisements. Or political endorsements, those that infringe on copyrights and other intellectual property, those are, those that are repetitive. Those that contain personally identifiable information, those that use profanity. Are discriminatory, defamatory, hateful, violent, pornographic or otherwise obscene. Or speech that is otherwise unprotected by the First Amendment and deemed inappropriate.
Uh, I, I was the fool on this one. I only, only read the resolution, so I apologize for that. Uh, but I'll, I'll, um, I appreciate it.
Don't criticize yourself.
The only thought that comes to my mind is on images. But as, as Jeffrey said, we can establish this baseline and we can update that at, at a subsequent date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see that our public safety chair has a comment.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm still a little bit unclear as to how this will work. Will someone be monitoring this on a daily basis or does the town use filtering technology to screen out any obscene or hateful or disruptive comments? And also, the second question is, what do you do if that person's off for the weekend, they don't notice something that's posted, in the meantime, it gets retweeted or shared or whatever? How are you going to screen these? Thank you.
So I can answer that one. Um, so I would, part of my duties as Deputy Town Manager will be responsible for these pages. I will, I get notified anytime action is used, uh, whether it's a comment or just a simple like and on my cell phone, so I can interact, I can check to make sure it's, uh, meets the social media policy in the moment.
So, Mr. Chair, the deputy town manager is on the line, so you have his contact info.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's anybody else that wanted to speak, Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, I don't believe there are any other public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, council. You prepared to make a motion?
I can, motion to adopt a resolution establishing, uh, the aforementioned social media policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Serko first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, and, and Ron.
The next item is to consider the adoption of a resolution establishing an invasive plant list, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this was introduced, uh, last month. Um, and then at our subsequent council work session, we had discussed what tiers and what plants specifically to put on this list. The council had requested that the PNRC take a look at it. Um, they weren't able to formally meet, um, between people being out of town, um, but they, uh, well, at least the chair had emailed me, we, we'd had some, um, communication back and forth and it endorsed approving the tier one and tier two list at this time. And the PNRC is planning at their next scheduled meeting to take up this topic and discuss if there are any other, uh, if there are any other on the, uh, there was a third tier list, um, as well, if there are any that we want to pull from there and add to, uh, an updated resolution. And I'll just note that the way that the, um, the way that this is written right now is if it, it, it's, it references the, uh, the Maryland Department of Agriculture's list, so if and when a, a new species is added to that tier one or tier two list, it would automatically be uh, rolled into the town's policy.
Thank you. Council President Serko, do you have any questions?
No questions, I'm excited on this too. We're moving ahead.
Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I'm going to approve this policy. I will add, I went to the Maryland Department of Agricultural site and they took, they actually list something else, uh, which is called the Plant Invaders of Mid-Atlantic Natural Areas Field Guide at that site. And the reason why they do that is that they have a, the tier one and tier two are rather constrained list, um, and, and there's a much broader category of invaders beyond tier one and tier two. Um, this field guide lists them all. It is con, it is updated regularly, a little one updated twenty-two. So at some point, we might want to look at that guide, uh, as a council or get PNRC's advice on that guide, um, to extend the list, um, beyond what is on tier one and tier two, and I'll stop there, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Heller. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Uh, none, just this thanks for, um, uh, moving forward on this.
Thank you. I see the Public Safety Chair has a comment or question.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to try to make this two for two. Um, my co, my suggestion is the, that you go further and require only native plant species, uh, for new construction. Uh, I don't know if you saw the email that, uh, Sarah Morris sent out recently that native or non-native plants attract different kinds of new mosquitoes to the area. Uh, so there are a lot of consequences to using, uh, non-native plants, even if they're not invasive. Uh, so maybe it's something that the PNRC would need to take up later, but that's just my recommendation. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just for plants, not for people, right? Mr. Westman. Non-native, just on the plant side.
Um, I think that's probably correct.
If you're going to do it, we have to re, rephrase these things.
All right, I'm not a native either, better.
Unless you're a non-native.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Te, did, did anybody else wish to speak, Mr. Town Manager? Mr. Mayor, I would just quickly add that this item is only necessary assuming you adopt the ordinance which follows on the agenda. And I'm assuming you're going to adopt that ordinance. Thank you. Don't, don't assume anything in democracy. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I can make a motion. Motion to consider adoption of resolution establishing an invasive plant list as provided by the council.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. And next is, uh, public hearing motion to consider the adoption of an ordinance banning invasive plant species during new construction is recommended by the Town Environment Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, I, I just in response to Mr. Veswani's comments previously, that, that might be that would maybe be addressed in this currently, um, uh, one twelve, the way that it's written is section one twelve-six oh. Uh, I'm sorry, one twelve fourteen B says, a planting plan must be submitted for new construction, the planting plan must not include in any invasive species. Um, so that, that's where that invasive species list came from. Um, this was introduced last month and is now, um, up for adoption. And this, just as a reminder as well, I'm sorry, uh, just one, one more quick point, that this recommendation came from the, uh, Environment Committee.
Okay, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I, I really glad to see our committees putting these recommendations forward to us.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I, I would like to specify a little bit better, um, so we make it non-native invasive plant species in the resolution, um, and in the motion, um, because that's, that's really what we're aiming at. Um, there are native invasive plants. I've got some in my yard, goldenrod is one of those. Um, it is a native plant though, so we're not banning goldenrod. Um, we're banning not, non-native invasive plants.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Heller.
Nope, no questions, thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
I agree with, uh, Rob and, uh, invasive is the universal set, however, Robin. Um, I, I just have one question for Matt. Will this now be part of Tolbert's checklist? For new construction?
Uh, yes, I mean, it, well, it, it will, yes. Short answer is yes. We, we, we will include it as part of the requirements for the application. So when an application is submitted and then Tolbert will review it.
So then we will be prepped to ask those questions, um.
E- exactly. I mean, the, the way that I'm envisioning it right now is a, a breakdown of a list of plants to be proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now, given that, uh, Councilor Barr, uh, is interested in amending what was presented, I'm going to turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion of, in final decision.
Then I'll turn it over to, to Robin to provide some of his insights.
Okay, I mean, it, it is just what I said, which is all, all we need to do is put non-native in front of invasive, um, that's the only change I'm recommending, and it further specifies what we're not allowing, um, and it goes back to, again, the, what we just discussed, the tier one and tier two, um, invasive plants, which are indeed non-native plants in there, um, and they have, uh, in fact, allowed a, a native species of bamboo, if you read further into that document, so they do actually distinguish between non-native and native in in the Department of Agricultural.
So why don't you, why don't you make a mo, why, it seems like everybody, why don't you just make a motion?
Okay, uh, move to adopt the resolution, let me get it on the agenda, um. All right. Um, to consider the adoption of an ordinance banning and, uh, non-native invasive plant species during new construction as recommended by the Town Environment Committee. That's it.
Second. Second.
But I thought you.
Assuming Ron is okay with it.
But I thought you wanted to. It's already. It's already in there, actually, so invasive species is defined as non-native organisms set forth on the list of invasive species adopted by resolution of the town council.
It's the universal word, Robin, that's what I'm saying.
All right, then, I, I won't fuss over it then, all right, I'll stop, okay.
So, so.
Make your motion again, make your motion again.
So, Councilor Barr, you are just moving what had been presented.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just, I'll make it clear here, to consider the adoption of an order of banning invasive plant species, and that means a non-native invasive plant species during new construction as recommended by the Town Environment Committee.
That will all be. Yeah, we could place non-native in the title of the ordinance to make that clear.
No, that's good, that's it.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment that's been accepted and the attorney. Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And our last item tonight is the manager's report. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, uh, just, I, I, I will, I am, I do want to be mindful of everybody's time, so I, I, I have the report there, so I, I won't go over it. Um, the only thing that I, I wanted to make a note on is the street right, excuse me, street light replacement. Um, the timeline that I said, after I had written this and submitted this, I, I got an email from Pepco clarifying that that's not necessarily how it works. Um, that the eight weeks don't, don't kick in until we actually pay the bill, so, um, I, I, I was maybe being a little overzealous on, uh, how quickly we might get this in, but that being said, they are aware that there, there is a time crunch, given that we are planning to use the ARPA funds for it, so, um, so there, there is, there's a reason for them to, um, want to expedite the process as well. But otherwise, I, I'll let the report stand for themselves and anybody has any questions.
Council President Serko, do you have any questions?
No question. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, uh, you, we're getting, you quote a fast charger for the, for the electric truck for the town hall. And do you mean a level two charger? That's like an overnight charger, um, for, for it. Is that what you're looking for?
Um, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know exactly what the I can, I can, I can send you exactly.
Probably a level two charger, in which case you're all right. Uh, the, the, the issue is that if you go with a faster charger, um, it can, um, shorten the battery life if you regularly use a fast charger. Um, but at a level two charger, you're not going to do that, so.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll share that with you and maybe get your, get your feedback on what I was looking at, just to make sure that we.
All right.
thoughtful, but thank you.
And we're making progress on the, uh, you know, the people who haven't responded on, on the, uh, uh, Stormwater Mitigation Project, you know, at the corner of Dorset and, and Essex, right?
Yes, thank, thank you, thank you for, uh, reminding me of that. Yes, I think there's, there's one more house that, uh, I think we're, we're feeling pretty optimistic about, they, they just, I think, in summer have been difficult to track down, but um, one more house that was kind of critical to the, the plan.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
None for me, thanks Matt for all the work.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Under trying circumstances, I'm glad there was no hurricane tonight and we will see you in person on August twenty-first at five-thirty.
Thank you.
Thanks for your flexibility, everybody. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you, everyone. It was a good call, Matt. Thanks for coordinating it.
Bye, bye, everybody.
Bye.